To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hello everyone. We have minutes, two sets of minutes to approve. I will entertain a motion to pass those. We have work-study minutes and a council meeting minutes from April 6th.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the work-study minutes from April 6th.
I second it.
Motion by Greg, second by Nancy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes for six twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion by Tom, second by Nancy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Mr. Morgan, do we have any public comments this evening?
I've had no request to speak tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, moving right on here to the ordinance four dash twenty-two fee schedule. Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Lacy.
So I did send you a clean version today, but I was kind of thinking maybe you didn't have enough time to really go through it. It's pretty similar to what was there before, but I took out all the yellow, so it looks a little nicer, it's easier to read. If you do want to take some time, I totally understand and push it off to the next meeting. But for the most part, we only took things away, we didn't add anything.
So that's the email where there was an exchange with Shul, correct?
Yes, yes. We wanted to make sure that we got our edits, so Ashley and I, Taff Law, went back and forth a couple of times and just made some edits. A lot of it was just aligning things and making it cleaner, but there was a couple of things that we did want to take off.
So what significant data was changed?
One was the police food and beverage, or was it? It was the police alcohol permit. We took that one off, and then there was fingerprinting and handgun license, those no longer exist. There is fingerprinting, but for a different background purpose, so that is still in there, but not for the handguns. And then we took away the thirty-six banner signage, and then in planning, we added the, there was a fifty-dollar temporary sign and a hundred-dollar permanent sign fee, and we just made them all-inclusive instead of just through the design review committee, I think it was before, in the project area. So we made it for everyone to have to have that fee. So nothing really major, but...
Well, what is the feeling of the council on that?
I think it's okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Then I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance four twenty-two, the fee schedule.
I second.
All right, I have a motion by Nancy and a second by Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
We will sign. signals, Town Manager, Mr. Morgan.
As I did at the last council meeting, this is just an upgrade of the table, no real significant changes. We are, we will meet regulations and have this advertised and posted for thirty days before we do any...
signs, Mr. Morgan. signs, Mr. Morgan.
As was last ordinance, this is just to bring our ordinance up to what we currently As was last ordinance, this is just to bring our ordinance up to what we currently
Do you need a motion?
have out there in the town. have out there in the town. We just changed the table. We just changed the table.
All right, any questions, comments?
I make a motion to, for ordinance five twenty-two, amendment for traffic schedules.
All right, any questions, comments?
No. No.
And a motion? And a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance six twenty-two. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance six twenty-two.
Second. 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 A motion by Tom, second by Greg. A motion by Chris, second by Greg. A motion by Chris, second by Greg. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Motion carries five zero. Motion carries five zero. We will pause for signature. We will pause for signature. We will pause for signature. All right, ordinance six dash twenty-two, amendment to traffic schedule for the yield signs, Mr. Morgan.
As was last ordinance, this is just to bring our ordinance up to what we currently have out there in the town. We just changed the table.
All right, any questions, comments?
No.
And a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance six twenty-two.
Second. A motion by Chris, second by Greg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I'd like to thank both enforcement officers, Blaine and Ralph. Blaine did a lot of, updated a lot of things.
Thank you, Blaine.
Thanks, Blaine.
Lisa.
Good morning, members of the council. Ordinance eight twenty-two is a super voluntary annexation. It is up for introduction. This property is located at, on the south side of thirty-six between three and four hundred east. The applicant's name is Pillars of Freedom. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Next item is ordinance nine, super voluntary annexation. This property is located at twenty-two seventy-six East Main Street. Applicant is Gary and Margaret Wilson. It is up for introduction as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we go on to item G, capital expenditure request for storage shed, water superintendent? It does say storage shed. Is that incorrect?
It's actually for a fleet vehicle.
I apologize, for some reason that should not be on there. This is actually for a new vehicle.
That's a little different than a storage shed.
Rob Benjamin, I work for the Water Department. Coming for you tonight in a request to purchase and trade in the old service truck for a new truck for the Water Department fleet. With growing department, increasing staff, Superintendent Matt Ellison has deemed this necessary to maintain reliable fleet vehicles to perform our daily duties.
That's in your budget?
I believe so.
I'm going to check this before the meeting started, and she agreed that he had sufficient funds in his budget to pay.
So I, anybody else have any questions?
I did. Was there a vehicle being traded in?
Yes.
What vehicle's that?
Our nineteen ninety-three Ford F-250, or I'm sorry, it's F-350.
Looks like we got four thousand on that. I just want to say thank you for getting quotes from multiple locations.
Yeah, we've got four different quotes here, from, one from Eastgate Chrysler, one from Westgate, one from Yorkson, one from Belastus.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Water Department expenditure request to purchase a new truck.
Second. A motion by Nancy, and two seconds by Greg and Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, capital expenditure request, expansion of pickleball courts. Mr. Lacy.
So I came actually a while ago talking about this. It's passed through the park board as well. All the funds have been raised through donations and sponsorship, so there's really, it's just using the money that came in for that in donations. So we're excited for it, and we're hoping someday they'll be able to paint it if the weather ever cooperates. So I'm just asking for your blessing to move forward and with the two courts.
Thank you, Will.
These courts are pretty busy, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
People love it.
I know.
Do the lights shut off at a certain time, or can they play all through the night?
So we used our ingenuity, and we actually made it coin-operated lights. And so we, we want to get LED lights there because, one, we don't have to wait for them to heat up, and, two, it's going to save money in the long run.
Does it accept Chuck E. Cheese coins?
Nope, it's, it's a good coin operator. I think we spent like three hundred bucks for it, and then we made that probably in the first two weeks of having lights on there. So yeah, they play a lot. They're actually, I'm going to have to ask the park board here soon, but we are going to do a glow tournament, so you'll be able to play pickleball at night, and we're going to have black lights out there, and the lines are white, so it'll shine, and then the balls are white too, so it'll be pretty cool. Normally, I don't like people in the park after hours, but we're going to make exception.
Very good. Any other questions?
Make a motion to pass the request for pickleball courts.
Second. A motion by Tom, second by Greg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Will. It looks like you're still up here for engineering of urban trail.
So for a while now, probably about four years, we've been looking for, and all the studies that the town has done, we've talked about trails, number one, number two, on every single study. And the hard part about Danville is it's already kind of built, so we have to find a way to where we can fit the trail in. One of the options was, we were looking to, pretty much trying to follow thirty-six and Old Thirty-six and then connect into Avon. I had a meeting with Avon, they are very interested in us coming their way. So what we wanted to do was, the hardest piece of the puzzle really is from like Town Hall to the fairgrounds, because it's already built, and there's a couple of waterways in there. So our goal is to do pre-design and find out how much that trail is going to be. And with that too, then we can start going for grants, and start looking at the bigger picture items, because we do have some, some entities there that I think could help possibly chip in to pay for stuff. You know, we have the county there, the hospital there, and other things along the way, and we have some development further down Thirty-, Old Thirty-six. That could, they're already building pieces of it, you know, as you go down that way. So our goal is, this is kind of our first major step in building it. So the old inner urban railway that used to go through town way back in the day, the train embankment that's still in the park today, we thought about naming it kind of after that. It also can make way for some rails-to-trails dollars, so grant money. So that's kind of our goal is inner urban trail, you know, eventually it would go all the way out to two hundred with that new development, and doing the little bits and pieces through town as we can. And, you know, starts out with the dream, now we're starting for the plan, and then just kind of work those pieces in as we can. It's going to take a long time to do it, but we, we've got to be able to do little sections now. You know, it may take ten, ten years to build it all, all the way out, but if we start now and do little sections, you know, that's how it gets completed, so.
What about the, that steel bridge over by Kroger?
That's part of this study will be, can we use that bridge? Does it save us money, or does it cost more money to bring it over? So those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. And the hardest part always, you know, just, we always talk about is the easements, you know, that's what takes a long time, getting easements, you know, getting everything together, utilities that are on both sides of the road, get navigating around them, because you're looking at eight to ten-foot trail, you know, in some of those spaces, like in front of Stratford, all those kind of spaces, it's going to take, take some pre-design for sure.
It's all coming from food and beverage, tax, funds, okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to pass the expenditure requests for engineering of the urban trail.
I second it.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Where are you going?
Master plan, he's got to put it up. He's a jack-of-all-trades here.
Extra plan.
So this is a culmination of a year-plus of study, studying the citizens' input. We've had group inputs, we've had just going, you know, analyzing all the stuff, all of our programs, all our revenues, expenditures, and this is the summary of that, you know. The master plan for the park is, is really important for us, because it's how we lead the department for the future, you know, following what the citizens want, and, you know, trying to figure out the means to push forward. And so this is the plan. Hopefully it'll be passed by the park board here in the next week's meeting, but I just wanted to bring it before you, so that you had a chance to look at it. If you have any last many, last-minute questions, feel free to shoot them my way. But a lot of intriguing stuff in there, especially with some of the survey results. It matched our project priority list already, almost to a T. There's a couple of things we need to probably bump up in priority, but it made me feel good that we're following, we already kind of know what the citizens want, so we're kind of following that path, you know, take care of Ellis Park, look for other opportunities when you get them, you know, and that's kind of the summary of it, and we're, we're pushing forward, and trails, of course.
Do you have any comments? So when it comes, so it's going to go to the park, they're going to pass it, and then it comes to the council for approval.
No, it actually just needs to go through the park board. I'm doing kind of like the blessing thing, because I want to make sure you guys are, you have been a part of it already, because you've been a part of the stuff, but it's really important for the park board and the council to make sure they're aligning their goals.
Well, I've gotten through a good portion.
Yeah, it's a long read. But there's some really cool and interesting stuff in there, too.
And I do have a few questions, but I'll, if it's better, I'll submit them.
No, I'm, I'm fine with any questions whenever you want to.
Okay, yeah. I won't do it now.
Okay.
I'll get my thoughts, I've got it scribbled out here on me.
All right, no problem. And all of you can feel free to reach out to me, too. We are going to do probably a priority projects list update in the next meeting, not this, this coming meeting, because I have a lot of stuff on the agenda, but the next one. So if you want to be a part of that, that would be great. I'll probably invite you anyways with, through my emails, but just rearranging some of those goals, and just making sure we're, we're following what the citizens want, so.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
All right. We are down to staff, council, staff and council comments, Mr. Morgan.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for item G. Department heads met this week, and utility director is meeting with NDOT to partner on some projects, getting ready to shut down the boiler for the summer, continuing to work on the floodplain, construction ordinance prepares to Broadway Sinkhole prior to paving, prepping Bostic Gym for a canopy, working on ERU updates, South Wayne Street storm pipe, investigation of complaints, elevator repairs here in this building, County Town Cleanup Day is on the twenty-third, is that right? And building repairs dumpster in the back. Parks Department, he's getting ready for park board prep, prepping for National Honor Society Work Day. He's losing employee, Stan's leaving, his last day is this Friday, he's going to become the Parks Director in Martinsville. Prepping job description for new hire by Friday, and he's working on pool summarizing and prep calendar. As far as his role as Assistant Town Manager, he's been doing some background checks on the HR person. Wastewater, they've, they've turned off, or they've had to turn off the breast algae clarifiers to do some work, Moe easements, lift station checks, ran the belt press three days, and they took one clarifier offline. Water Department, Water Solutions will be out to investigate the phosphate injection system at the water plant. Dave York with EJP will be out, was out yesterday, install and implement new handheld device for reading water meters. He's investigating a possible water leak at two forty urban, and at the North Elementary Booster Station, install and calibrate new chlorine injector. Not heard how his father's doing tonight, I'm sorry. Not heard from that. DPW, they'll be milling and patching several areas around town, spray patching areas to be crack sealed in May, to seal areas too large for crack sealing. And he's been working with Midwest Paving, because they've been delayed two days due to mechanical issues and cold temperatures. Two hundred east will be paved today, Broadway will be paved Thursday, paved Thursday and Friday. When not supervising paving operations, he'll be updating pavement assessment management inventory, submit to LTAP. Community engagement, website's looking good, a little bit better, still needs some love, gathering supplies for the spring cleanup event on Saturday, the twenty-third. Been a webinar, creating content via smartphone, three CMA, working on Facebook posts, working on park addresses, claiming park properties on Google, helping secure donations for the police golf scramble on July twenty-second, and pricing swag for the national night out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I apologize, that is not all I have. Planning Department, BZA meeting was tonight, sorry Lisa. Received two applications for the May BZA meeting and one for design review, working on zoning ordinance text amendment for the flood areas, preparing legal notice for Plan Commission public hearing on May the eleventh. This is due to a legislative change by the state of Indiana, reviewing a temporary use permit for a construction staging area on Lincoln Street for Rocky Express Pipeline, request for performance bond releases on Kensington Section Two, Camden Creek Section Two, and the deadline for RFP submittals for the UVO is May the sixth, and scheduling a meeting with the planning workshop next week as they prepare their proposal. That is all I have, sir.
Thank you again.
Mark, I had a quick question. You said that there was staging for pipeline work on Lincoln Street?
Yes, sir.
Do we know where that pipeline's running, or is it, is it an existing pipeline?
County Road one fifty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Will, do you have anything else?
Yeah, got a couple of things here. One is, I visited the Hendricks Regional Health Clinic over there on Old Thirty-six across from Pizza Hut. It's in our insurance, we all go over there, everybody, it's an employee. I managed to go over there and get a checkup, and I thought they were very professional, it's really easy to get to, and they really are a great spot there, so. Give them a heads up, that's a really good place. Second thing is hazardous duty pay for the employees of the town. So I went into this a little bit. The, all the townspeople, all the town workers have different things they do. Some people deal with hazardous chemicals coming down palverts, some people have to jump in a hole where they have to fix a water main, and they could lose their life with that. We have Parks Department and chlorine in the area where they work, and virtually all departments, we know virtually what the police and the fire do that's hazardous. And I know we have a precedent already, we pay the scuba divers. What do you call that pay? As a?
Chief.
Siphon pay. Is that kind of a term for hazardous duty pay, or?
Rob, would you come up to the microphone, so it can be recorded, please? Sorry.
We just put the dive stipend in place this year for the divers, it's six hundred and fifty dollars. We never had a stipend before. They do a lot of training and off-duty training, so we felt it was necessary to put a six hundred and fifty dollar stipend for their training.
Okay. So... Community engagement, website's looking good, a little bit better, still needs some love. Gathering supplies for the spring cleanup event on Saturday, the twenty-third. Been a webinar, creating content via smartphone, three CMA. Working on Facebook posts, working on park addresses, claiming park properties on Google, helping secure donations for the police golf scramble on July twenty-second, and pricing swag for the national night out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I apologize, that is not all I have. Planning department, BZA meeting was tonight, sorry, Lisa. Received two applications for the May BZA meeting and one for design review. Working on zoning ordinance text amendment for the flood areas, preparing legal notice for plan commission public hearing on May the eleventh. This is due to a legislative change by the state of Indiana. Reviewing a temporary use permit for a construction staging area on Lincoln Street for Rocky Express Pipeline. Request for performance bond releases on Kensington Section Two, Camden Creek Section Two. And the deadline for RFP submittals for the UVO is May the sixth. And scheduling a meeting with the planning workshop next week as they prepare their proposal. That is all I have, sir.
Thank you again.
Mark, I had a quick question. You, you said that there was staging for pipeline work on Lincoln Street?
Yes, sir.
Do we know where that pipeline is running or is it, is it an existing pipeline?
County Road one fifty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Will, do you have anything else?
Yeah, got a couple of things here. One is I visited the Hendricks Regional Health Clinic over there on Old Thirty-six across from Pizza Hut. In our insurance, we all go over there, everybody, it's an employee. I managed to go over there and get a checkup and I thought they were very professional, it's real easy to get to. And they really are a great spot there, so. Give them a heads up that it's a really good place. Second thing is hazardous duty pay for the employees of the town. So I went into this a little bit. The all the townspeople, all, all the town workers have different things they do. Some people deal with hazardous chemicals coming down over, some people have to jump in a hole where they have to fix a water main. And they could lose their life with that. We have Parks Department and chlorine in, in the area where they work. And virtually all departments, we know virtually what the police and the fire do that's hazardous. And I know we have a precedent already, we pay the scuba divers. What do you call that pay? As a siphon pay? Is that kind of a term for hazardous duty pay or?
Rob, would you come up to the microphone so it could be recorded, please? Sorry.
We just put the dive snipin' in place this year for the divers. It's six hundred and fifty dollars. We never had a snipin' before. They do a lot of training and off-duty training. So we felt it was necessary to put a six hundred and fifty dollar snipin' for their training.
Okay. So basically I'm used to it in my industry, hazardous duty pay. And I thought it might be a good thing for our, our employees. And what I would like to do today is maybe get some comments here, but maybe get it on the, on the voting in a couple of.
Is this something we currently have in place right now?
It's something we can address during the budget process.
Okay, that's what I was thinking as you were talking is maybe that's something, because, I mean, the budget that we're under right now is already in place. Maybe that's something, and we're going to start those discussions soon, I think. Yeah, so. I think it's worth looking at.
Okay, that's good.
So you've, you've, you've looked into it a little bit. I'm curious, do, do you know of, are there municipalities around us that are?
No, I haven't. I in general asked people and they didn't know about it, but I didn't go very far with that.
Okay.
So I thought I'd get to this point, if people were interested, then do a little bit more work.
Okay.
We'll put whatever we do out to other municipalities and ask them if they have any kind of.
Well, we know how hard it is to keep employees in general and so much more in Danville, so, just because of.
And I thought, just not the fire department and the police department, but all the other departments too, they do things that are pretty hazardous. Barry has to work with Mark, so that's.
Well, yeah. That's, that's a privilege, though.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mark. Yeah, so there you go, that's my thoughts and
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Look into it.
Great idea.
Let me do some thinking on the comments that you just made, Tom, because I work in an industry that's very hazardous and there's no hazard duty pay, so.
Oh, okay.
I'll do some thinking on that and we can have a discussion.
They, they don't care about you over there.
And you can take it to your employer.
All right. I don't really have much. It's hopefully spring, it doesn't seem like it some days, but I know the pool's not that far away from being opened. So it's just, it's good, good to see some of the life coming to Danville and appreciate Madison with some of her information postings over the last few days. I think it's important because there is a lot going on here in Danville and so that's good. All right, we are down to claim docket.
Make a motion to approve the claim docket.
Second. Motion by Greg, second by Tom, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Do we want to leave?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion in two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, we adjourn.